All right, so I've got everyone on mute here. I'm gonna unmute one person. That's Commissioner Palmer. Commissioner Palmer, the mayor has just texted me and indicated that he's gonna be a few minutes late and asked us to go ahead and get started. So in your capacity as mayor pro tem, could you unmute yourself and call us to order?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I've never done this, but I would like to call us to order.
All right, I'll pull up the agenda so that you can see what the next steps are here. You can give the invocation yourself, designate someone else to do it, designate someone to give the pledge of allegiance, and then lead us through the items.
Is it okay if I do the invocation and have Joe do the pledge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I guess I'll do the invocation by saying a prayer. I'd like to say, "Lord, thank you for all you do for us. Thank you for blessings and opportunities. Thank you for everyone that's here today and just bless this meeting and let good things come from it that bless our town during these trying times for our nation with this virus and the racial tensions and things that we're dealing with. Lord, just bring us peace and wisdom and just bring us love, Lord, and just have us be the people you would have us be. Help those less fortunate than us and do the best that we can to live your purpose in Jesus' name. Amen." Joe, could you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we go to additions or deletions to the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to make one change to the agenda if possible for tonight. Could we move item which is listed as item 13, Mayor and Commissioner topics, could we move that to what would actually be item eight and make it A so that we could have that discussion prior to going into the public hearing?
That's okay with me. Does anybody else have any additions or deletions? So I guess now we will go for approval of the agenda. Want to do a roll call?
Yes, sir, roll call vote.
Okay. Do I call the names out or do you?
I think we need a motion first.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion that we accept the agenda with the one item change that was asked for.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I've got a motion and I've got a second.
If you're comfortable calling out the names, Commissioner Palmer, that'd be fine.
Okay, do I have to do it in any particular order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Andrew Palmer, yes. Michael Parsons?
Yes.
Debbie Ferguson?
Yes.
Angela Day?
Yes.
Bert Hall?
Yes.
We have five, so it passes. Now, do we have anyone signed up for public comments, Wilson?
No, sir, not that I know of. And I'll give a qualifier that these are non-budget-related public comments. If you've come here to comment on the yearly operating budget, we'll wait and hear your comments during the public hearing for that. So if anyone's out there viewing who would like to make comments on something other than the budget, if you can, press the raise your hand button on your screen or unmute yourself and speak up now. All right, hearing nine. Commissioner Palmer, if it's okay with you, we'll proceed to the next item.
Okay, so we are at number seven, which is the consent, and we have two things on the consent agenda. We have approval of meeting minutes and the Wilks Art Gallery lease renewal. We can do those all in one motion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I would need somebody to make a motion now.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion that we accept the two items on the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Sorry, was it Commissioner Day with the second?
Yes, Wilson, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now we'll do a roll call vote again, and I'll do the same order. Is it okay if we go ahead and start?
Yes, sir.
Andrew Palmer, yes. Michael Parsons?
Yes.
Angela Day?
Yes.
Bert Hall?
Bert Hall, Bert.
Said yes.
Bert.
And Debbie Ferguson?
Debbie, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So we have five, so that is approved. So where we move the mayor and commissioner topics, does that move to 8A? So that's after the town manager and attorney's report, correct, Wilson?
Yes, sir. I don't have a report tonight.
Does Daniel have anything? No.
Not that I know of. Daniel, could you unmute yourself and share?
No, I do not have a report. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, I guess, 8A would be the mayor and commissioner topics. Does anybody have anything they want to add there?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, it's come to my attention that we are, there've been some questions as to how the emergency act, the emergency authority that we have bestowed upon our town manager was to be applied. So I asked Wilson to post this. This came from our work session that we had on March the 26th, where the, at the time, the virus and the things were, you know, just getting kind of ramped up and we were really unsure as to what actions we were going to need to take. And we were thinking that we needed to be a little more fluid with our ability to react to those. So therefore, we gave, at that time, some emergency powers to the town manager. And what I would like for us to do as a group is just revisit these. Wilson, if you would kind of go through the three specific items and how it pertains to some of the things that you have done during these, since that particular night, and then just discuss as a group what we think is the appropriate measures going forward.
Yes, sir. So the first thing I'll point out, and I've got the resolution here up on the screen for you to read. I'll make it a little bit bigger, but I'm afraid that might cut off some of the language. So I'm gonna scroll down and cut off the name of the resolution here and just show the substance of it. The first thing I'll say is that you did not endow me, nor could you have endowed me with the ability to exercise the town's police power. That power falls on the mayor during a state of emergency, and he has been exercising that authority judiciously in consultation with the town attorney and me and with his counterparts in the other local government agencies. So I just want to make that clear from the jump that you did not endow me with any type of police or regulatory power. The power that you did endow me with is expressed down at the bottom there in the three bullets, the ability to make emergency updates to our personnel policy. And this was necessary as folks were getting sick, as folks needed to stay out and isolate, as we were working with a reduced workforce. To be able to amend the personnel policy to accommodate those needs was a critical power that you endowed me with, and I appreciate that. And I think we'll still need that, I'll still need that going forward as the situation evolves and as the virus's effect on our workforce evolves. The main thing that I did with that was, of course, something that I notified all of you all about was created a new section in the policy about pandemic staffing and giving employees the assignment to stay at home. And so we put together a program where non-essential employees were asked to stay at home to help us break the chain of transmission. At the time, during the original stay-at-home, the encouragement by the state and by all the health authorities was to try to keep people apart as much as possible and to let people stay at home as much as possible. Now, we couldn't send everybody home because the government still needed to function. So we divided our workforce into essential and non-essential and asked non-essential positions to stay at home. As a way to acknowledge that the essential folks were working under increasingly difficult circumstances while others were safe at home, we reduced the compensation for stay-at-home employees to two-thirds. So they got to keep their full benefits and they got paid two-thirds of their normal rate. Now, other towns and other municipalities were furloughing people and sending people home with no compensation. And I didn't want to do that. I didn't think that was fair to the people who were being sent home with no choice of their own. And also, I wanted to compensate them so that we could call them back into service if need be. And so you can't ask people to stay ready and stay at home, not kick their feet up all day if you're not paying anything. And so it was kind of like we were paying them to stand by, two-thirds of what they normally made. Of course, yesterday, we resumed full staffing, and so that plan has been concluded. Utility and town government policies, this was something that immediately after you endowed me with this power, the governor made that endowment moot by mandating that every municipal utility in the state do what I was planning to do with that authority, and that was to waive disconnections and to waive late penalty fees temporarily for folks who didn't pay their utility bill. So that was a best practice up until that point. It was something that the utility industry was encouraging all utilities to do as a matter of fairness to people who were out of work and who were required to stay at home. But almost to the day after you gave me that authority, the governor required it. So I didn't actually have to do anything there. The last one is the, probably the most notable one, the ability to modify business practices such as altering business hours for walk-in customers, to halt non-essential services, to offer alternative business transaction techniques that mitigate public contact, et cetera. And if you'll go back up to the comment, or excuse me, to the paragraph, the "now therefore be it resolved" paragraph, it says, "The town manager is hereby granted to take necessary action such as the following, but not limited to." And in our emergency, I construed this endowment to be a broad grant of authority, and this is what I used to make the decisions that we talked about last week during our work session, to cancel the concerts in July and August, to keep the pool closed through the summer, and some of the other modifications to services that we made. Did those in consultation with health professionals, did those considering both the health impacts of carrying on with those services, but also honestly, the financial impact of carrying on with those services, and use this grant of authority to make those decisions.
All right, Wilson, a couple of things on this that, you know, and this is where I want to kind of get a feel for what people are thinking, you know, some of the things I would like to dial back on as far as going so far out with concrete plans that seem to affect certain events in the town, such as, you know, the ability to, you know, the ability for the parks to be open, the ability for certain functions to occur, because my feeling is, is that if we're following the governor, and I am a strict believer that the governor's orders are to be followed, but June 26th, if I'm not mistaken, is the phase three, supposed phase three. And so what I would like to see is, is instead of necessarily taking such long-term action, is that we dial it back a little bit so that we can take a more fluid approach to our decision process.
Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Debbie. Do you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know what your thoughts are on doing this. I'm sure that you have a reason for differing from the governor's recommendations, and would you mind to explain that?
Well, we don't know what all phase three is gonna include. So we don't even know if, under the governor's recommendations, that these events would even be permitted in phase three. So I'll just start off by saying that. The other thing I'll say is, the governor's decisions were based on statewide trends. And when he moved us into phase two, those trends were looking encouraging. Since then, those trends have started to creep back up, and the governor acknowledged that today at his 2:00 PM press conference. And that's statewide. But here, the trends for the last few weeks have not been as encouraging. Of course, we experienced a spike, and we still have one of the highest case counts per capita in the state. And so at the time we were making these decisions, we weren't in what I consider to be a safe enough environment to proceed with these services. And so I have been following the governor in one sense and aligning my decision-making with his and in consultation with the mayor, and that is that we're using the same criteria that he's using, notably that we want to see positive movement in the healthcare trends before we reopen and start resuming services as normal. And at the moment, we don't have that positive movement. So with those two things in mind, at the time we made the decision, and not knowing what phase three would even contain, and also considering the contractual limitations that we had with some of the artists that we had scheduled for the concerts, the cost of reopening Smoot Park Pool for a half-season, or with space limitations in place that might limit the number of paying customers that we can get through the gate, we added that financial consideration on to our decisions as well. And so even beyond the safety factor of those, of providing those services, we also considered the financial impact of carrying on with them. And with those two things together, our group decided with my, or our group recommended, and I decided to go ahead and cancel those services through August.
Wilson, do you have a sense of what other communities are tending to do with their community pools?
No, ma'am, I sure don't. I've heard mixed things. I've heard that some are reopening and some are not. But all I know is that our public pool is the only public pool in Wilkes County where the cases are high. And so we're in a special position to make this, to discuss this.
And our director of the Public Health Department, remind us of her recommendation, if you would.
Yes, ma'am. So she's not comfortable with the recommendations that the state has put out for opening pools. She might use more diplomatic terms, but I would say that her reaction to those is that they're not adequate. And so that is behind her endorsement of my position.
My feeling is that it's very hard, it would be very hard to control children's actions in a swimming pool. And I think back to the many, many summers, driving by, looking at the pool, and children are almost shoulder to shoulder in the pool, and about all they can do is jump up and down, and they're clearly having fun. But I see it as a difficult task to set up rules for who gets to come, how are you fair to all children. I just see it as very difficult. Plus, there could be a change in the governor's recommendations on the 26th of June, and if we had gone to the cost of opening the pool and found then that we had to close it because the virus has increased, that would be disheartening.
Well, Debbie, I don't, I don't want people to misunderstand. This is not about just the swimming pool. I mean, if we don't open the swimming pool this season for financial reasons or whatever, you know, you can't, that's fine. This is, this is not what I'm talking, this is, this whole pool thing is getting thrown in, it's like it's a one-issue deal for me, and it's not. It's this, it's this perception of just keeping everything locked down so tight. And I mean, like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying throw it out. I'm saying at least keep our options open, keep the, keep the prospect that we, the citizens of this town, are going to potentially have something to look forward to, to do. I mean, you know, you can't keep people so tightly bound up that it's gonna, that they're just gonna, it's gonna break. And I think if you don't give the people something to look forward to, then I think, I think you're, I think you're creating more problems than you're solving. And like I said, I am in no way advocating throwing out the rules. I support the rules. But all I'm saying is, is can we not create at least some options, you know, where we as a board can come together with Wilson and make and have a discussion so that, you know, we can take something to the people and say, you know, I mean, my whole thing is, is that right now, if something occurs with a, you know, a decision, and someone calls me up and they say, you know, Commissioner Parsons, why, why is this? Well, because we haven't discussed it as a group, I don't have an answer for them. And I don't like not having an answer. So all I would like to do is, is make sure that we keep our options open, keep our conversation going so that we can share to the people, you know, a plan for the future. Because right now, it all just looks bleak. And, and it may be bleak, Debbie, I'm telling you, I'm not, I'm not discounting the seriousness of what we've got going on. But I think you also have to understand that people will reach a point where it won't matter. They're going to do what they want to do. You know, if people are fearful of the virus and fearful for their safety, then they're going to act upon it. But then there're going to be people that are gonna be darn the torpedoes, full speed ahead. And so I'm just saying, keep all our options and considerations on the table and, and maybe make it not so distant in the future. That's all I'm saying.
Michael, if, if the pool is not such, such a significant issue, what is it that you would like to see opened up before the governor reaches phase three?
Nothing. I'm not, I'm not asking, that's, see, that's the thing. I'm not asking that we go against the governor. Okay, that's, that's, again, don't misinterpret what I'm saying. But I'm saying is, is that phase three, for example, has some caveats where things increase. Well, we don't know what August is gonna bring. We don't know what September is gonna bring. All I'm saying is, is can we not just automatically assume that August is going to be done for, September's gonna be done for, can we not just keep some options on the table and just, if nothing else, just see? That's all I'm asking.
Well, Wilson, in my mind, the way I have looked at it is that we always have the option of doing something differently. If with Wilkes County being one of the hotspots in the state for COVID virus, say that changed dramatically in two weeks, and we probably wouldn't open the pool because of the timeliness of it, but opening parks, I'm, I'm not sure what else is, is the, are the things that people are thinking about, but couldn't we make changes at any time or ask you to?
All right, so I'm gonna go down a list of the services that I think we're talking about here because they're each governed by something different. The concerts, we canceled because, again, a mass gathering is a high-risk activity. If we, if our situation improved and mass gatherings are permitted in phase three, we could probably put on a concert, but it wouldn't be the folks we had planned because we've already canceled those. With the information that we had at the time, when it was looking very, very unlikely, in my opinion, it's still looking unlikely that those will be safe, but certainly at the time we made those decisions, it was looking very unlikely like that we were gonna be able to carry forward with those, so we canceled those. But theoretically, if the environment improves significantly, and by July and August, we could carry on with those, perhaps we could put together something. The pool, again, like you say, if they came out with some additional guidance that our health folks felt was adequate, that we could open the pool safely and at full capacity, then yes, we could do it. Now, again, as I said, it would be a big expense, and we'd have to talk about whether it'd be worth, worth doing from that sense. The playgrounds at our parks are closed by the current executive order. The governor has said that those may not reopen in phase two. The other facilities at our playgrounds are closed by our, our choice because we feel that those are still too risky to open. Although the science is changing, at the moment, the best guidance says that the virus can live on surfaces. That's why the playgrounds are not open. And so we've used that logic to keep the picnic shelters and so forth closed. A basketball court, a baseball field draws a crowd, and crowds, of course, as we know, are still risky things to have. But we could open those, and, and the staff and I have been looking at ways to see if we can open some of those amenities. But we could open those and, and the staff and I have been looking at ways to, uh, see if we can open some of those amenities safely. Uh, so that went over the, the concerts, the pool, um, the playground amenities. If you saw my email from about an hour ago, you'll know that one of the other, uh, town services that's been closed, the farmer's market is reopening on Saturday. Uh, we, uh, evaluated that uh, and discovered that there are ways that we think we could do that safely, and so we're gonna. So it'll be open on Saturday and it'll look a little different than, uh, what it normally looks like. The vendors will be more spread out and so forth, but that's been reopened. Uh, as I said, all our workforce has come back, uh, to work and they've been, over the last two days, working to make up that backlog of, uh, landscape maintenance and so forth that's piled up over the last few weeks. We evaluated that and concluded that we could do it safely. And so, uh, the things that aren't prohibited by the governor's orders, uh, if we can do those safely, um, then yes, we have the ability to reconsider those and to resume those services.
Wilson, this is Andrew.
Yes, sir.
I've got a few thoughts. Um, before I say anything, I just want to say thanks for all you've done. I know you've worked hard to try to further the, um, stuff you've been working on regarding the virus. But, um, I'm glad that we're discussing this stuff. I, um, I have some thoughts on the approaches that we should take to some of these specifics that Michael and Debbie met before, but instead of talking about that, it would bring me back to my point. I wish we would have had these discussions before. And I feel like that when I voted in favor of the, uh, resolution 2020 dash oh, oh, six that get granted you the authority, I did that because I felt like you needed the ability to do things quickly because the emergency, things were changing fast. And so we wouldn't have to have these meetings. And I personally feel that we're no longer in that situation. And I think that although you've had a lot on your shoulders and, and done a lot, one of the things that has moved along is kind of, I think with Michael's sentiment, that I feel we should be having discussions on things like this. I feel like we have the time to. And I would be in favor of going back to just the quote unquote regular arrangement where, uh, you do the day to day things and you also, when there's, uh, a policy change, excuse me, that may affect the community, you come to us with scenarios like you normally do and we talk about them, kinda like how we're talking about this and then we, we make decisions. And I, I feel like that it's important and I, I feel strongly that it would be best for the board, uh, and, and you and most of all the community if we, if we move forward in that capacity versus what we're doing now. And then, uh, we can discuss these things and, and, uh, and, and think about all the specifics because to be honest, there's a lot to talk about. There's a lot going on. And it's also a lot of, uh, burden that you've had to take on your shoulders. And, uh, I have felt that way. And I've also had a lot of the people in the community reach out to me. And I've reached out to other people just to kind of see where they're at. And I've kind of been reassured that that thought is a valid thing, way to think. So, uh, that's, that's, that's my thing on it. I would, I would prefer that we have more discussion on these things and, and go back to a, a quote unquote regular, a way of doing business. Anybody got thoughts on that?
Well, that's certainly where, you know, my head is on this because like I said, I, I, I don't like, I don't like uh, being on the board and not feeling like I'm in the loop. And, uh, so, you know, I, I'm kinda, I'm kinda on board with Andrew on that, uh, aspect of, you know, ultimately, uh, a lot of, a lot of decisions that, uh, affect the town, it falls on our shoulders. And I feel like that that's what we were elected to do. And I think that's what people expect of us. I in no way think that it's any reflection of anything because, like I said, given the state that we were in on that particular day, Wilson, I'd vote for it exactly the way I did on March the 26th. So it's not, I mean, I, at that time, it was the appropriate action. But now I think it's time that we as a group, you know, kind of, kind of have some discussions of where we can go and how we can take this. And do it safely. I'll emphasize that. Do it safely, protect our citizens, but also, you know, get us moving in the right direction again.
Uh, Michael, I have a question for you. Um, when you say change things and get us moving, what does this mean that's not any different from what we've been doing?
Well, Angela, what I say, what I mean by that is, is that by going ahead and making assumptions that, you know, the summer basically, because you're talking about all of July and all of August, you know, why can't, why can't it be like, you know, phase three comes in and, you know, we assess on our meeting, you know, because we're meeting twice a month, Angela, we do. We meet twice a month. Most of the time, we have a board, regular board meeting and a work session. And why can't, you know, at those meetings, we have this kind of roundtable discussion? You know, I'm not going to tell you that I'm not going to agree with exactly the recommendations that's coming from Wilson and our county health director. But what I'd like to see is, is a conversation with us where, you know, we are, we are showing that we are, you know, we have the community's interest at heart and that they see the same from us.
Michael, I'd like to say on that, I mean, I think we have always had the opportunity to have the discussions. It's one of the reasons I said last week at our meeting that I wish we could get back to, um, in, in-person meetings because this is really the first time I think we've been comfortable enough with the Zoom meeting to interact, but we could, we could have always done this. And, um, but Wilson, I'd like to ask you, this is a new kind of experience for, for me. This is my 15th year. And we've had the occasional state of emergency granting powers. But usually it just lasts hours. And this is an entirely different kind of situation. And, um, I really don't know what is considered appropriate, say from the school of government or from other municipalities around the state. Um, how is it working and how do they look at going back to regular time?
Before I comment, I'll say that the mayor has logged on. Uh, so if you haven't noticed, he's, uh, here now to participate. The other thing I'll say is, um, there's 535 or so municipalities in the state and there's probably that many different ways of, uh, looking at reopening. And so I think we gotta do what you all consider to be best for us. I will say that this is the exact kind of feedback I was hoping to get last week at the meeting. Uh, and I put my recommendations on the agenda, uh, as a way to hear this feedback. And hearing none, uh, I presume that that was a, uh, a, a confirmation of the recommendations that I had made. So, uh, I, I'm very conscientious about keeping you all in the loop and, uh, hearing, uh, uh, your thoughts on these significant public matters, um, even when I have, um, the, the authority to make the decisions. And so, uh, that was why I brought this, this question before you all last week.
You know, I, as a board member, am, am looking forward to being in a room with everyone here. I mean, if everybody will come, please come, and so we can talk and discuss. And I think that's been difficult for all of us over the last few weeks. We tend to accomplish quite a bit in our two meetings a month. And so I'm hoping before the end of our meeting is over, that we'll decide to be able to move forward in a setting where we're all in the same room, if we can find a large enough space so we can communicate and where the public can actually come and sit and ask questions and, and do public statements about this instead of trying to contact us on Zoom, which can be difficult. I am not against taking it month to month and looking at how things are going, particularly if the numbers are going down and we see things getting, um, getting much better. I don't think looking at something and analyzing something once a month is an issue or even more so. And so it's not about taking away power and who makes decisions and what the mayor does. To me, it's we need to make sure what's safe for the community and what, um, and listen to what our citizens want to do. And I have heard several statements from folks who've called me that they would like to, instead of blocking out the whole fall, summer and fall, looking at it much like we have discussed in the past on a month to month basis. And I think, Michael, you mentioned that. I'm going to give you credit for that for sure. So I'm willing to try to look at another, other options. And, you know, we'll obviously know if we're not being successful. The numbers will tell us, um, I think.
Commissioner Day, uh, if I could follow that up with one comment. Uh, Commissioner Ferguson, this, uh, goes back to one of your questions and that is, I presume that at, at some point that, uh, you all would, um, rescind that resolution and take back that grant of authority. And so, you know, I was expecting that at any moment. Um, and it's up to you all to decide when that time is, of course.
Wilson, this is Andrew. Um, before I say anything, I want to say welcome back, Mayor. Uh, glad you're back. I wasn't, uh, trained, uh, for that. So I apologize if I didn't do a good job, everybody. Um, anyway, with that in mind, like, I appreciate all that you've done, Wilson. I feel like you've had a lot on your shoulders and I've thought about you many nights, uh, having to think about many of the decisions, uh, you and Robert have dealt with. And, um, I personally, uh, feel strongly that I would like to see things go back to, to the, the way they were before that. So we can put that behind us and just move forward. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion to rescind resolution 2020 dash zero, zero, six that was approved by the board on March 26th and granted comprehensive authority to the North Wilkesboro Town Manager regarding state of emergency powers. I don't know if I worded that correctly, Daniel, may have to redo it, but I would rather just put it behind us and move forward. And let's just be a strong team and address this terrible issue, uh, with the COVID virus the best we can. And, uh, I feel like that would be best for the board, for Wilson and for the town because, um, I feel like there's going to be a lot of discussion that needs to take place for everybody to, you know, feel comfortable and move forward. And I'm not, I'm with what they said, you know, it's a difficult discussion and we may, um, may or may not do things the same way, but we need to discuss it. So, anyway.
I second the motion.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you ask that question again?
I said, was that in form of a motion?
I don't know if I need to reword that, probably.
I think the intent was, was clear of, uh, your motion, Commissioner Palmer.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to ask for some discussion before we vote. And that would be...
I've got a few things I'd like to say. When you get through, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, Wilson, you have just this week, when you asked us last week about, um, uh, bringing people back and moving into this next phase, we all were in agreement at the time and with closing the pool and that sort of thing. Now, um, are there other things that you feel you would need to be able to move quickly? Or do you feel like you could do what you need to do if we go back to, if we rescind the state of emergency?
Well, there's some things that I've put in place that, um, could arguably fit in bullet one and bullet three here. Namely, the measures that we put in place to protect the workforce here in Town Hall. Uh, Town Hall is a, um, public facility. But, uh, right now I've asked that it be closed to walk in traffic, uh, in order to protect the workforce here from community spread. Um, their health is the most important thing to me. If we lose a handful of our workforce, we literally can't perform the services that we're here to do. And so with Town Hall being closed, we can perform those services in a modified way and keep our workforce healthy. So if you all, uh, rescind, uh, uh, this resolution, I would hope that you'd affirm my, uh, measures that I've put into place regarding Town Hall. Um, and those are that it's still closed to walk in traffic through phase two. Um, we are accepting, uh, payments at the window on Main Street. It's open to the public by appointment only. So you're still able to come here and meet with the staff person that you need to meet with. Um, but you need to make an appointment. Uh, and we're asking all visitors to Town Hall, uh, to wear masks.
Wilson, I want to, I want to you to be assured, especially by me, that day to day operations of Town Hall, the employees, staff, that is your jurisdiction. I don't question that at all. And if your, your need to keep your employees and our employees, the people of North Wilkesboro, uh, safe, you would never, I would never question, I would never question, that's a managerial, to me, that's a managerial decision as far as your immediate members of your staff and your teams. And so, um, there, there's no question for me uh, that you are, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how the emergency proclamation that we gave you or resolution that we gave you really would have changed that to start with because if at any point you felt that your team or your staff or your building or the employees or the, you know, I would expect you to act in a, a comprehensive and concise manner to protect because that's, to me, that's what you do.
Alright, in that case, the, uh, public facing services that are still, uh, sort of happening under modified conditions are, as we alluded to earlier, the availability of our recreation amenities. Some sort of concert schedule, uh, for July and August. Uh, again, those gatherings are prohibited by the executive order in phase two. So July is the earliest we can start that. Um, and then also a question of whether the town would permit or otherwise accommodate, um, other gatherings that are scheduled for the rest of the summer. So the cruise ends and of course, we mentioned the big one that's months out and that we still have, uh, we, uh, will occur and that's the Apple Festival. Um, but there are other smaller events that, um, take place between now and then that the town isn't the sponsor of, but has a role in, um, accommodating, uh, whether we're gonna, um, allow those to proceed. So, uh, those are the three main public facing, uh, services that, uh, are still outstanding. Decisions for are still outstanding.
Wilson, uh, this is the mayor. And good evening to everyone. I've spoke to, I don't know, probably Michael, you and Andrew and Debbie. Don't know if I've said much to Angela, but I agree with Angela. I'm ready to get back into being able to meet in a boardroom where we all can get together and talk about the issues that we're faced tonight. And Michael, I do appreciate your helping me with this Zoom business, but it's about to drive me up the wall. Um, so to, to your point, Michael, and I think Angela, you, uh, reiterated to it, it, it does, and Debbie, I think you chimed in, it does us good to have our two meetings and especially our work session meeting. And we don't have a lot of time with this Zoom meeting stuff to be able to talk to one another, kind of one-on-one and... uh, it's to me, I just get, to be honest, I get frustrated with it. Uh, and I've been around longer than any of you, but um, I think the things that we're trying to do um, for the protection of the virus, and I watched the governor's thing today, and in the state of North Carolina, the cases have gone up. Now, hospital and deaths have gone down, but cases of this virus has gone up throughout the state. I've not talked to anyone lately about Tyson deal, but I do know that Tyson is doing a good job uh, cleaning and uh, get testing the people before they go in for temperatures and all of that sort of stuff. But it is uh, one of the better things that I like about us all sitting in one room together. And I know right now, we can't have all that many people in there, but we can communicate, I think, better one-on-one. As Debbie said, and I think Angela may have, and well, all of you may have. I, I got in, uh, signed in late, and I, I don't know, this, this stuff, just talking to y'all on a screen just frustrates me. Uh, and I don't know, it's kind of a comical thing, but in a sense, but I do appreciate every one of you. And I, I do think as soon as we can, we all need to be looking at each other's faces other than on a screen and being able to communicate. Uh, I don't know what the things I missed earlier part of it, but I do, I do think that we need to keep uh, the swimming, swimming pool closed. I think we need to be very cautious about opening up down at the marketplace for the concerts on the deck. So let's be sure that we err on the side of safety and of health and not have any sickness and death from this stuff. So that's where I am, and I, I just, I just want us to be sure that we're doing the right thing before we move forward in opening up too much stuff.
Excuse me, Mayor, I, I had one thing. So there's one other service that we're uh, performing under modified conditions right now, and it's these virtual meetings. Um, and that was a piece of feedback that I got loud and clear from you all last week, and that is your preference to resume in-person meetings. And so the staff and I have been exploring um, options this week on where we can safely hold uh, in-person meetings for the rest of the summer. Of course, Michael offered the Stone Center, that's obviously one option, um, but we're looking into a few others now. And so we will resume those, certainly in July, if not our next meeting at the end of June.
And all the comments that I've heard since I've got on the screen with you and, and in the meeting, uh, I'm in total agreeance with them. Uh, but we, we need to be able to sit in a boardroom and talk eyeball to eyeball, face to face. I, I, I hope all of you uh, feel the same way and, and appreciate that fact. If there's any other comments about that, I, I'd like to hear.
This is Andrew. I agree. It'd be, it'd be good to see each other's faces or, I guess, each other's mask in a room.
No, go ahead, Mayor.
I'm sorry. Uh, Andrew, uh, I, I agree with you, and I, I'm in, I'm in hopes and praying that we can get rid of the mask and everything and, and get back to a normal uh, way of life. I know that's not anything that's going to happen immediately, but I appreciate the feelings of each of you that I've heard about, how what we need to try to do and, and try to help our downtown or businesses around and about the community. So I just feel that if we can make eyeball to eyeball, face to face, it just helps a lot. So that's just my take on it. So I thank everybody else for their input, and uh, Bert, it's good to see your face, buddy.
Thank you.
So we do have a motion on the table. Uh, just wanted to remind that we still have a motion to vote on here.
We do. If you'll do the roll call, uh, Wilson, please go ahead and proceed.
Well, Andrew was uh, was leading those roll calls, so I'll, I'll ask him to perform it on this one, too. And also, repeat the motion for the benefit of the audience.
Okay.
You know, Wilson, I'd like to say something before we vote. Um, I think this resolution, taking it away, keeping it, I really don't think it changes the focus of our board. We have, from the beginning, been focused on health, safety, um, trying to make sure we don't have large crowds and large gatherings. We've done all the things with Wilson that needed to be done. And so we, if we, it probably is time to rescind this, because we can continue to work as a team, continue to work with the manager, and we're just going to have to realize we can't predict the future, and we're just going to have to face things as they come.
Agreed. I agree, Angela.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, let's proceed with the vote.
Andrew, if you would repeat the motion and uh, lead us in the roll call.
I would like to make a motion to rescind Resolution 2020 dash zero zero six that was approved by the board on March 26, 2020. And now go with the roll call. Uh, Andrew Palmer, yes? Bert Hall?
Yes.
Debbie Ferguson?
I'll say I will vote yes, but I would like to say I do not see really any change that's going to occur. If we need to talk about something, we should have been talking about it last week. And uh, the only thing that I am concerned about is that it will limit Wilson's ability to respond quickly uh, by perhaps trying to get in touch with us. Um, and the crisis is not over, but um, you know, I'm okay with going ahead and uh, rescinding the motion. I don't think it's going to do anything for us, though.
Michael Parsons?
Yes.
That was everybody, I think.
Angela.
Oh, Angela, damn, sorry.
I say yes, but I'm going to agree with Debbie. I don't think this changes the care we give to our citizens and the good things that happen. And we'll continue to work to open up other things as its safety allows. And I say yes again.
That's a point well taken, too. I agree. Debbie, Angela.
So with five votes, the, the motion passed.
And thank you, Andrew, for filling in for me while I stumbled in.
I tried.
You did well, I'm sure.
Mayor, are you ready to proceed to the next item?
Yes. Go ahead, Wilson. I'll turn it back over.
Pull it up on the screen here. All right. The next item is our public hearing on the FY 2021 General Fund and Water Sewer Fund budget. Um, if you don't mind, I'll give a brief summary before we head into the public hearing. And then, Mayor, I guess it'll be up to you on how you want to do this uh, virtual hearing. If you just want to have uh, folks who are in the audience who wish to comment, um, speak out and, and share their uh, desire to comment or to press the raise the hand button on their uh, screen, whatever you prefer. But uh, um, I'll give you a moment to think about that as I make a, a brief summary. So I presented my recommended budget to the board back at the beginning of May. Uh, they officially received it uh, at our meeting in May. Uh, subsequently, it was posted uh, online on the town's website. Um, before this year, it was also required to be published in person at Town Hall, but since Town Hall is closed, that requirement was waived by the state, and an online posting was sufficient. Um, we posted this hearing uh, on our website at that time, and we also posted it in the Journal Patriot print edition two Wednesdays ago. Um, this is a statutorily required public hearing. Um, uh, but the new general statutes governing virtual meetings require that we give people a 24-hour uh, window to make additional public comments. So after we hold the public hearing tonight, we'll recess the meeting, reconvene again tomorrow at around 6:30 or so um, to take the vote on the budget. If you are interested in commenting between now and then, you may do so at townhall@northwilkesboro.com. Again, that's Town Hall, all one word, at north-dash-wilkesboro.com. Or you can call me at 336-667-7129, extension 3012, and I will share uh, any feedback received uh, over those two mediums with the board. Um, as for the budget itself, uh, again, it is our best guess based on what we know now, uh, but we do know that the epidemic is going to affect our budget some way. Uh, we know that our revenues are going to go down, but we don't know by how much. Um, and so this is a very conservative budget, uh, 2% less than what our budget was last year, but probably eight to 10, maybe even 12% less than what we could afford uh, if we hadn't experienced the epidemic. Um, and we're doing that because we don't expect to collect as much in the coming year as we have in the past. Uh, I'll go ahead and say now that we might even have to take some actions mid-year to amend our budget uh, by dipping into our um, uh, rainy day fund or making some other changes to our budget in order to accommodate um, our lower expected revenue. Uh, one thing we can't do mid-year after we approve the budget tomorrow is change the property tax rate. That is set. That will be 52 cents per $100 of valuation, just like it was last year. So the 2% budget that um, I'm presenting, or 2% smaller budget that I'm presenting uh, was reached by efficiencies alone. Uh, we have very little capital spending, and our operations will be uh, on the razor's edge. Uh, we'll have, the departments will have very little extra money. They'll have to do their best to perform their work economically uh, and save money that way. Um, but all the services that we provide currently will be provided in the new year. Um, this budget doesn't cut any public services. And as a matter of fact, it adds a few small things. Uh, town employees will be eligible for a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. This is an acknowledgement of their importance to the functioning of the town, um, but also to say thank you for their hard work and commitment. Um, this cost of living adjustment should keep them above inflation for now. Uh, remember, any cost of living adjustment less than the inflationary percentage is essentially a pay cut for employees. So this is keeping them ahead of the curve slightly. Um, the budget also adds a fourth full-time engineer to the North Wilkesboro Fire Department. Um, uh, this will help us stretch the dollars that they received from uh, the federal government in their Saper Grant. Um, that grant um, made us uh, subject for the first time to Fair Labor Standards Act's, Act's requirements. So one way or the other, because of that new requirement, we were going to be paying more to our fire uh, department for salaries. And so we figured that we might as well hire a fourth full-time person uh, with that extra money we were going to have to spend uh, and enhance our services at the same time. So this should make them more efficient. Um, this should make sure that we don't have uh, engineers working 24 hours straight. Uh, we'll have a fourth engineer who can come in and spell uh, those folks after a long shift. And I just want to remind folks that although we are spending a little bit extra local money here, uh, we're getting more than a dollar-for-dollar match from the federal government uh, in return for our investment. So um, we'll be able to enhance our services in the fire department, both with our local money and uh, with grant dollars from the Feds. So those are the general fund highlights. The water and sewer fund highlights are, uh, again, they've uh, got a smaller budget this year that they've achieved through efficiencies alone. Uh, very few new capital investments this year. However, we do expect significant capital investments next year and in the year to come. So my recommended budget does include a 2% increase on water rates in town for each of the next five years. And I want to bring something up on the screen to share with you while we are conversing. Uh, the impact of that increase um, is shown here. Uh, that means for an average house, they'll pay about $1.24 more per month. For a large factory, they'll pay about $101 more per month. And that seems big, but keep in mind that they already pay thousands and thousands of dollars per month on their water bill, because they use hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of gallons. And a restaurant will spend about $2.15 more per month in the new fiscal year. And this money will sock away in our capital reserve fund and use it to pay for significant capital improvements in the coming year, like, coming years, like a water tower, a treatment plant upgrade, or replacement of our aging sewer pipes underground. So we're not using this extra money to get fat and happy. We're using this extra money to improve our system for all our users. So in the coming years, we'll use this extra revenue um, to build significant new capital projects. Uh, after five years, the average household will be paying about $6.45 more per month. A large factory, about $500 more per month. A restaurant, about $11 more per month, more per month. But hopefully by then, our new capital um, items will be in service and um, we'll, we'll have an enhanced system uh, that uh, our customers can use. My recommended budget, because uh, we actually have a pretty small in-town customer base, uh, that increase wasn't enough to pay for those capital increases on its own. We had to share the burden with our wholesale customers, which is the four rural water associations surrounding North Wilkesboro. And my recommended budget includes a nine cent per 1,000 gallon increase in the next fiscal year, and another nine cent increase per 1,000 gallons in FY 22. So an 18 cent per 1,000 gallon increase over the next two years. Um, they're currently at 210 per 1,000. They'll be at 219 next year and 228 the year after that. Um, that rate is lower than what Wilkesboro charges to their wholesale customers by about seven cents, and they're in the midst of a grad, a graduated increase on their wholesale rates as well. And it's below what Elkin charges their wholesale customers by over a dollar. Um, so it's still great value for our rural water associations. So those are the highlights of the budget that I wanted to share. Uh, Mayor, I'll throw it to you to uh, hold the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, I will uh, pass into a public hearing and ask if there is anyone uh, on the uh, meeting site that has any questions or comments for the uh, presentation that Wilson has presented. If so, we'll ask for them now.
If you're interested in sharing, please remember to unmute yourself.
Okay. I don't know how many we have sharing uh, on the site tonight, but I appreciate I don't know how many we have sharing, uh, on the site tonight, but, uh, I appreciate everyone that does turn out. And, uh, with that being said, uh, there's no comments, I'll, uh, declare ourselves out of a public hearing and ask for a motion.
Uh, Mayor, the motion will be to re, remember, the motion will be to recess the meeting until, uh, about 6:30 or so tomorrow night.
Right. Ask for a motion to recess till 6:30 tomorrow night.
I make the motion that we recess the, uh, public hearing until 6:30 tomorrow night.
Thank you, Michael. I need a second.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Angela. Is there any other discussion or questions or comments that we need to hear from Wilson? If not, Wilson, we'll do a roll call, I guess, and raise the hands.
All right. Uh, roll call vote on the motion to recess. Andrew?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Bert?
Good. Good.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, it'll be on the same link, um, so everyone, please save the link that you used to log on tonight, and I'll see you tomorrow at around 6:30 or so.
Okay.
Bottom of the hour, so if you want to proceed, I think we can go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Board of Commissioners and administrative folks, I'm going to, uh, think this is the proper way to do it. You can correct me, uh, Wilson, if not, I think we need to come out of recess. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Call the meeting back to order.
I bet. I call the meeting back to order, and if there's not any questions or anything else about the, uh, budget, or is any question from any of the commissioners or any comments? If not, uh, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Well, Mayor, as a point of order, I believe we need to be taken, uh, taken out of a public hearing. Is that correct, Wilson?
I'll ask Danny to consult what the procedural steps are here.
Probably right, Michael, but I, I thought we, I thought we did that before we recessed, but I may be wrong.
We did.
I don't believe that, that we did.
Okay. Well, just, uh, call us back into, uh...
So I think the, Mayor, the, the correct, uh, procedure is to, um, close the public hearing, um, and then, uh, begin the discussion on the budget itself.
Well, I made a motion for that, correct? Or not?
To close the public hearing?
Yeah. I won't, will I?
Uh, Debbie and Daniel, do we need a motion for that?
No.
We did that last, we did that last one minute.
Okay.
Say again?
No motion required. Um, I think just for consistency's sake, if you'll just, uh, close it here, that way the comments or the comments, the one comment that we received today, I guess, can technically be considered part of the public hearing.
Okay. Well, if there's not any comments from anybody, the public or any of the commissioners about this, I'll declare us out of public hearing and then call for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for fiscal year 21 for the general fund and the water sewer funds as presented by our town manager, Wilson Hooper.
Thank you, Debbie. Do have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Michael. Have a motion in a second. Do any of you have any further discussion or comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to, um, thank the staff, that would be the, the, uh, department heads and finance officer and manager especially because they had to go back to the drawing board, uh, after the, um, COVID crisis began. And, um, with their foresight, they decreased the budget, um, to try to prepare for what the changes that we'll be seeing in the, um, tax revenues. So I, I do appreciate their foresight for that and the work they put into this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, and, uh, I would, uh, say, uh, that I would agree with that wholeheartedly, and does anyone else have anything they'd like to comment or say or any?
Mayor, I'm, uh...
Yes?
Bert, I think, uh, I think you're, you're going in and out, Commissioner Hall.
Say one, the worst, worst part of these to me. Okay. I just will say that, uh, I don't like the two, and, and, and the two, and the straight two, I'm gonna go, I'll go for it, but, uh, I just want to say I don't like it. I mean, I, I thought, I thought, um, it's some, uh, some way turned, and turned, uh, but, but I will go for it. Okay? If you understand, if you understand, I do.
Yes, sir.
I have one question, Wilson.
Yes, sir.
When things like, uh, get canceled and stuff, um, what happens to that money that was budgeted for things like that?
Well, it, it depends, um, on the, uh, terms of the contract. Uh, some of those performers, um, the contract says that, uh, we can get a full refund. Others of them say we get a partial refund. Others of them say we, um, they get to keep our deposit, but they don't have to pay us the other part. Um, so it depends. Uh, the other thing is that, um, uh, well, no, I, I was gonna, I was gonna say something, but now I think about it, I don't think that's right. So, so it depends, but the money that we do save, um, will just stay in the general fund. Um, we'll either use that to pay for other things, uh, or if it goes unspent at the end of the year, it will be folded into our fund balance, um, for the subsequent years.
Thanks.
Evening. Uh, my waters is, the water is free, is too, and it's, it's too late, it's too, too late, and it's okay. Okay. My daughter said I should say it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor?
Okay. Send it and take it.
Okay. There's not any other comments? I think Debbie made a motion. We've got a second. Uh, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by hand raising. Is that right?
No, sir. We need to do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
There you go. Back it away then.
Uh, Commissioner Palmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Good.
And Commissioner Parsons?
Good.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so that's, uh, passed unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to, what's the next item? We, on the agenda, is that, does that get us through?
Yes, sir, because if you'll recall, we moved, let me go back to the table of contents here. We moved the mayor council topics, uh, to the front of the agenda and had that discussion yesterday. Um, but I will, I, I think that if anyone has any other topics that they'd like to talk about, they, it'd be appropriate, uh, to talk about this.
We'll give everybody time to do that. If there's any other comments or anything anybody'd like to mention before we sign off.
Mayor, I had a question, uh, that I, I really meant to ask yesterday, and it's brief. It's for Daniel, um, regarding the building at, uh, 910 Main Street, the terracotta colored building. And, um, it's the one we've wished to dispose of for some time, but it's just been complex. And I wonder if you have had an opportunity, Daniel, to look at that and see what you think about working out the disposal of that property?
Have not, but I'm glad to look at it and, and give you my thoughts.
Okay. Thanks.
Daniel, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Gary had done some research and had contacted John Logstun and had had some conversations with him. So if there's any way you might could, uh, look up some of that information or reach out to, uh, Mr. Logstun, uh, to kind of bring this back up to speed because, um, it's, you know, like I said, I think Gary was trying to work on the complexities of the fact that it was, had to be somehow jointly combined in some manner. Uh, and so, um, I think that if you can, uh, maybe check some of Gary's previous notes and then reach out to Mr. Logstun, maybe we can expedite this.
I'll be glad to. I actually saw John a day or so ago, and if I understand correctly, those buildings, the McQuay firm and that building share some common areas.
They do. Yeah. You, you described it well, Commissioner, uh, Parsons, and, uh, the last, uh, thing I remember Gary saying and briefing us was that he, he was trying to put together some sort of like condominium agreement, um, where each tenant has joint responsibility for the common, in this case, wall. Uh, the wall was not, it was not the type of wall that separates the buildings into two different entities. Um, they were considered one building, and so, uh, he was trying to work out some kind of arrangement. Um, for the benefit of the commissioners, I'll share that we've had a couple inquiries about some of our properties, um, since we talked about our real estate approach last. And so that's why that's going to be on the agenda later this month to continue that conversation so that I can get some firm direction from you all, um, how to respond to those inquiries. Uh, I think probably the person who was interested in that, um, building, uh, has backed away because of the economic downturn, um, but it was encouraging that we had an inquiry, uh, to begin with.
Yeah, that's good news.
Anything else?
I had one quick comment. Um, I know that there was some, I had some comments from the public, you know, several weeks ago regarding the increase in the water sewer rates, and I just wanted to say again that, like, I know the optics of it may look bad, the timing, because we're in an economic crisis, but I still think it was the right thing to do. Um, we're not guaranteed that the economy is going to be in a better position next year, but we can't afford to get behind on our water sewer infrastructure because it's just so crucial to, uh, doing what the town needs to do to serve the citizens, and I just wanted to, to make that statement, and I think it was, it needed to be done.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I think we've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
A, a motion to adjourn. I don't know if we had one tonight, Mayor.
Yeah, I thought Debbie, what, what was it Debbie, uh, Debbie Ferguson made?
For the budget.
Budget? Okay.
So I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, sign off, and if you don't want to sign off, you can stay on there all night. I won't be there.
Everybody take care.
Thank you very much, everybody. Michael?